Can I have a motion to suspend the rules?
No.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. We have a motion by Mr. Lawrence, second by Mr. Guines. All in favor? Those opposed? Motion carries that the clerk would read the revisions.
To the consent agenda, we're substituting 5T resolution accepting the bid of Hopkins Construction and Maintenance for Lighthouse Visitor Center repair and Biloxi Visitor Center renovations. Adding 5V resolution for closed-in leases with Harley-Davidson leasing for police department motorcycles. Adding 5W resolution authorizing entry into repurchase motorcycles with Russum's Gulf Coast, also known as Harley-Davidson.
Is there a motion to accept the agenda as amended?
As amended.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Lawrence, second by Mr. Guines. Any discussion?
Yep. My only comment is, I don't know how many of these are of an emergency nature. I don't know that the motorcycles are, but again, these are last-minute agenda items. And I wish we could get all these done prior to, an hour or an hour and a half before the council meeting, so that those folks who may be out there interested in some of these additional topics would know they're being discussed today. That concludes my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tisdale. Any other comments? All in favor? Those opposed? Motion carries. Five to one. Mayor's report?
Thank you, Mr. President. Welcome everyone here to today's meeting. Look like a very energetic group. And like the Apostle Paul, I'd like to call Frank Bardoyan to talk about the good news of insurance today, right? I'm just kidding, Frank.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. I have folders in front of you, and really, this is the first of many iterations that we're going to go through with regards to the insurance program this year. This is with our incumbent carriers. And AMRIS has been on our account for a number of years. They not only went up tremendously on our premium, which we anticipated, they also went up on the deductible from two percent to five percent. And so, to buy that down to the million dollars that we normally buy down, obviously, the buy-down went up significantly. Our total insured value is up about twenty million, thirteen percent. Last year over this year, so obviously, we knew we'd have an increase just because we're purchasing more insurance. If you turn to the backside of the one-pager, you'll see the difference. And it is significant. Roughly a forty percent increase in premium. That is not an increase in rate. Our rate is much less than forty percent, but because we have a thirteen percent of insured value, you know, that's going to drive your rate. This is the first iteration. Our broker is currently in London right now. We're probably going to replace our carriers. Not probably. This, our carrier's going to be replaced. There's going to be a number of different carriers that are going to be on this program. And there's going to be several different deductible options. Just as I told you all last time I came before you all, we're going to have to work with the administration till the very last minute. And that's how it is on every big renewal that I'm dealing with, is literally to the last minute of working with every carrier out there. And so, you'll see in the newspaper or on the news, the wind pools having a tremendous increase. This is not isolated to the city of Biloxi. This is the entire marketplace. To add to insult to injury, we found out yesterday that our casualty carrier is pulling out of the public entity business completely globally. And so, we're going to have to replace them. That renewal doesn't come up soon, but there's going to be a lot of work, especially between Peter, myself, and y'all's adjuster to replace them. And that's going to be a big piece. We knew we were possibly going to have to replace them on law enforcement, but they're pulling out of the market completely. So, zero good news.
Any comments? Any questions?
And I wondered if you were replacing, how many options you have?
So, we're going to, we could easily be back to where we were after Katrina, where we have twenty or twenty-one different carriers. We're going to have to make sure that all their terms and conditions follow for them from the top layer to the bottom layer. The one good thing is, is the wind deductible buyback market is not as hard as the rest of the market. So, where we saw almost thirty percent on our excess layers, we're seeing a one percent on our primary wind deductible buyback. And so, we may try to take advantage and use that buyback. There's going to be several different options. And one option is something we did after Katrina, is where we have our million-dollar deductible. We buy a certain amount of insurance, and then we take another deductible, a corridor deductible, to try to drive down rate. We're going to have to try, we're going to bring every option we can to you all.
Frank, can I make a point?
Yes, sir.
Or could you underline the point? All this increase in insurance is not due to anything that the city has done or hasn't done. In fact, the things that we can control, such as workers' comp, the injuries are way down.
So, yeah.
Penal liability?
Our law enforcement liability, compared to your counterparts, not just Mississippi, but your counterparts, y'all performed very well. And I gave the insurance committee the claims books, and we can go through those in executive session at a later date if y'all want to go through it in detail. But y'all are performing very well from a casualty standpoint. Your carrier pulling out has nothing to do with Biloxi, it has to do with the global insurance. They pulled out all public entities yesterday. They went and fired a lot of their underwriters, and I'm sure they'll end up at Travelers or some. But we're very limited in Mississippi right now on casualty side. You know, it's going to be Travelers, or we'll have to go back to Britt. And we're working with Liberty Mutual, trying to get them to come to Mississippi. We're working on several different carriers, trying to get them to come to Mississippi. But we're on top of it. We're working it. That is well later in the fall, when that comes up. The property is the main thing right now. And so, we're going to continue to work every option we can.
Any other questions? Frank, we appreciate your hard work. We know we've got a lot of work to do, and as in the past, we've seen the effects of your due diligence on our insurance costs. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Frank.
If y'all have any questions, just give me a call anytime. Thanks.
Thanks, Frank. Appreciate that. At this point, I think we've had a very successful parade season, beginning with Mardi Gras and winding up a few days ago with St. Patrick's. But at this point in time, to give us a Mardi Gras update, let me invite Susan Hunt, supported by her sister, Martha Hunt-Trip.
Hi, Uncle Upp, it's cold. And y'all knew I was speaking today. How'd you know?
It was on your agenda.
Thank you. They got red. Hey, thanks for giving me an opportunity as well as Anna Harris, just to give you a little update about the Coastal Mississippi Mardi Gras Museum. Ms. Harris is going to provide you with some detailed information, which she's already passed out. And we just kind of want to keep you updated on what's going on at the building, where we are. Some of the areas of the floor of the museum, if you know, we laid, we put down new tile and all that. But because of the moisture underneath in the building, the older building, some of the floors bulking up. So, we have met with Mr. Harden along with Barbie, and they will repair that particular part of the floor, which will cost us around three thousand. Termite damage, Mr. Graves took care of doing the termite treatment. But we are going to be replacing like the drywall and doing the painting. And that will cost us maybe eighteen hundred. We're not exactly sure, one thousand eight hundred. The sidewalk around the museum will be replaced, and we're presently getting the price. I want to thank y'all for all your support and help. And now, I will let Ms. Anna Harris will provide you with additional information. Ms. Anna?
Yes, thank you again for your support. We wanted to let you know, we had six hundred and twenty-seven visitors from forty-one different states and four countries in the past three months. We've had several tours and events at the museum. We had a field trip from St. James Catholic Elementary School. We had two-chamber events. Leadership Gulf Coast Culture and Heritage Day came by for a lecture. And Coast Young Professionals held their Cultivate event at the museum in February. As you know, we were very excited to partner with you again and bring back Twelfth Night. It was a wonderful event. We think we had around three hundred people. It was just fabulous to bring that back again. As well as the shoebox float contest, which we had, just recently had the winners here. And of course, the children's marching parade and contests. So, they're all just wonderful, family-friendly events. And we appreciate your working with us to bring those to the public. So, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. On your policy agenda today, we're, and I'm here is Ashley Pickens-Lamont. And she's in the front row here today. And I told you keep your speech under five minutes, but no, I'm just kidding you. But she'll be a great school board coordinator, and we're asking you for your support professionally. She holds a bachelor's science degree from Mississippi State University, and she's been employed at the Board of Arts since two thousand and six, working all the way up from sales and marketing to the executive assistant to the president of the Board of Arts. We're real pleased. She and her husband Chad have a Parker, a son at the middle, middle school, upper middle, whatever it is, seventh grade, right? But I think she'll be a great member of the school board, and that's our point, and we ask you for your support. So, thank you, Ashley.
Thank you, Mayor, for your report. Are there any departmental reports? I don't see any on the agenda, but I want to make sure that I didn't miss anything. There being none, we'll move on to council report. Mr. Lawrence?
Yeah, we had a great thing Friday night. The mayor and Paul Tisdale, we opened up the Senior Olympics at the Gruert Center. And if you pay attention to what's going on with the Senior Olympic, there's two hundred and nineteen pickleball players. That's how well this sport has grown. So, when we get to our next meeting, we need to address that issue with the pickleballs, how we can expand and make it better for the city of Biloxi. But that turned out to be a good thing. And a lot of people was from like Louisiana, Arkansas. I was surprised that that many people from out of town was here for the Senior Olympic. But it's a good event that Biloxi's hosting. Next thing we had Saturday with two o'clock, the St. Patrick's Day Parade. St. Patrick's Day's not till Thursday. But I mean, we had a great parade. The mayor's running around, Mike's over there throwing bees. He's a little short. You've got to work on his arm. Yeah, okay. Got to reach the stand, make these people happy. But that was a good event for the city of Biloxi again. That turned out to be three great parades in a row and three great days of weather. It was a little windy, but actually, Saturday was really nice. So, that was a good thing. That's it.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Guines, you get to follow that?
No report.
Mr. Demme? I mean, Mr. Newman, sorry. Mr. Demme?
Mike, I don't know if I overlooked an email. Did we get an update or any input from your engineers on that catch basin over at Moss Point, I mean, Club Moss Circle? Ravenwood.
I'm going to move this to the night, just see what happens. Let him go do something about the address. Let him handle all that. That's up to him.
Okay, great. But we... Okay. Right. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Tisdale?
Yeah, yes, a couple of things. I had a Ward Five meeting last Wednesday. I'd like to thank Dr. Cedric Bradley from Gulf Coast Community College, Ken Jones, who was a developer, who spoke about the Yule Cove townhomes that are being proposed. Mr. Creel, Jerry Creel, Chief Miller was there. Damon Torcelli, an engineering, an engineer with Neil Schaefer was there. Walt Rhodey was there. And Sherry Bill had sent me a written report. She was at a Senior Olympic event, as I recall. I wanted to thank them all personally. The others, a question. Do we, do we have either a psychologist or a psychiatrist that can talk to police officers or their families if there are issues? Or even, I'm thinking maybe firefighters? I'm just thinking it would be advisable to have somebody like that. I don't know if we've had somebody in the past, or... But I'm, I'm just thinking, with all they experienced during the course of the week, month of their careers, it would probably be helpful if we, if we had somebody they could talk with. I don't... Okay. Well, it's just, as long as we keep searching, but I can only imagine some of the stress-related events or activities or incidents they have to deal with. And I know it's, can't be easy for all of them and sometimes their families. That concludes my report and question. Thank you.
Mr. Demme would like to follow up on Mr. Tisdale's statement.
Mike? Chief Miller, and Mike, when you say you look for someone to work for us, is that in employment capacity?
Not, not in an employment capacity, but as a consulting capacity. And what the chief was just whispering in my ear about was, we're going to have to look at the insurance very closely in terms of what is covered in workers' comp and so forth, and what the credit, what the credits are, are of the person that, that we hire. In other words, it has to be a certified... We'll have to, again, I'm not sure, I don't know enough about the certifications, but in order, in order for us to file insurance claims on it, will have to be a certified.
Chief, are you familiar with any, any state regulations that would restrict or limit who we could or could not contract with?
My understanding, and the problem that we've had is the psychologist that we used for so long passed away. Did a really good job for us, but he passed away. So, we've, we've tried, along with HR, to try to find somebody that would do this for us. The majority of the psychologists and psychiatrists, it has to be one or the other, according to our insurance, aren't interested. They don't want to work with workers' comp at all. So, we thought if we could, if we could get that changed to where a, just a person that's certified, you know, like a nurse practitioner, that, that would probably help us a lot. But as it stands right now, they have to be a psychologist or a psychiatrist in order for, for our insurance or for workman's comp to cover.
Okay, yes, Frank, Tupai's not here.
Yes, that way. The way that it used to work in the past was if someone had an issue, they could just call HR, and HR would set them up with, I think it was three visits that, that the city would take care of. And then anything after that, they had to pick up themselves unless it was, it was deemed to be work-related. And apparently, the majority of them just don't want to work with, with workman's comp. It's the best, the best answer we've gotten so far.
Is that, is that due to reimbursement rates?
I don't know.
Via workers' comp?
I don't know. That would be a Jill question, I think.
Okay, thank you.
Chief, just, I caught something that you said, and that the city used to pay for the first three visits and af, and thereafter. Does the city no longer do that?
I, I don't think so, but I'm not sure about that, because we haven't found anybody that would allow us to do it. But we actually had a, more of a mental health program at that time. And when, when the, when the psychologists that we used passed away, it just kind of seemed to...
Fell apart.
Fell apart.
Okay. All right, that's good to know. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. Under my report, I got a couple of things. The first, Biloxi Baseball Little League kicked off this week and actually, the end of last week. And I've been out at the practice fields and the batting cages. And really and truly, those batting cages, the surface is slick. The kids are slipping, the coaches are slipping when they're trying to throw batting practice into those cages. So, I would ask the administration to take a look at that for safety reasons. If we can get the surface of the batting cages looked at, I think they need to be replaced. I mean, they're just worn down, and when there's a little moisture out there, it just gets, gets extremely slick. The other thing, I had the pleasure last week to go up into Jackson with Coastal Mississippi. And our keynote speaker was Ms. Susan Hunt. And she, I tell you what, she gave a glowing keynote speech to all that attended, the history of Dear Island, the history of Mardi Gras, the attractions and everything you're able to experience in Biloxi. And she even recommended a restaurant that has a dynamite hostess that will greet, meet them and ask them who they're related to. But it was, it was fantastic. Coastal Mississippi invited some of the Jackson corporations and some of the organizations up there. And they were, they were entertained. And I tell you what, what a spokesperson for the Gulf Coast. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Hunt. And that concludes my report. We'll move on to public comments. We have forty-five minutes allocated to this segment in the agenda. Each person, when you're called up to come speak, come, come up to the podium or come up to the desk, state your name, your address clearly for the clerk to record, and then you'll have three minutes. So, we'll go ahead and get started. Anyone on my left, your right, would like to speak?
My name's James Barney Foster. Address nine four six one Woodlands Drive, Biloxi. I'm here for the short-term rental at one oh seven Jefferson Davis Avenue. I've been operating short-term rentals for nine years in Biloxi. Never had a complaint, never had any problems. We started operating one last year at fifteen oh two Beach Boulevard and St. George Avenue. It's three blocks down from the Jeff Davis Avenue. So, they're real close together. I've never had any complaints at that rental. And, and when I went to the planning commission, when we did fifteen oh two Beach Boulevard, everybody supported it. When I came before the council, y'all supported it. And the main thing I've gotten out of all of this is that if these homes are on the beachfront, they're pretty much in. Because the beachfront is Beach Boulevard, it's a commercial corridor, it's where they belong, along Highway ninety, commercial areas. Another thing, on one oh seven Jeff Davis, when we went to the Biloxi Planning Commission, all of them supported it too. And I would like to stress that nobody showed up to oppose it. Letters were sent out, sign was posted in the yard for two weeks. Nobody showed up to oppose it. And if there's complaints or concerns about vacation rentals, it should be at the planning commission, because they do an excellent job of trying to fit this stuff together if people have concerns. But nobody spoke up, nobody showed up. We were the only ones there. The planning commission, but nobody opposed it. I'd just like to keep iterating that point. And, dang it. But, but they do, they, they do an excellent job over there. And I've watched them with the hotel recently, where they got with the neighborhood, and they're coming back to rehash it out. But I just, nobody opposed it over there. And I'd hate to think that people show up here and oppose it, and then it gets turned down. And I don't think we should conduct business that way in Biloxi. If it's not opposed over there, because they do an excellent job over there. And there's plenty of parking on this location. It's a four-bedroom, five-bath house. There's parking underneath the house, four spaces. You probably get five, six cars in the driveway. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Foster. Anyone else? My left, your right?
I'm going to go after her. Did you say right or left? I'm on the side.
Right or left? Right or left? You're, you're at the desk.
Okay. I am here today. My name is Martha Hunt-Trip, and I live at one thirty-two Jefferson Davis Avenue. And I have lived in this neighborhood for seventy-one years. And I'm here to oppose the short-term rental. And the reason we did not show up at the planning commission was because I assumed, and everybody else did, and we didn't read the sign, we figured because it was on the beachfront, there was not going to be, we weren't going to have any say-so. But I realized that it said one oh seven Jefferson Davis Avenue. I read that. And then I realized we needed to be here, because I'm afraid that if that happened to that on the end of the street, it would open up the rest of our street having short-term rentals. I've been here twice to oppose short-term rental on Acacia and the one on Avalon. I'm opposing short-term rentals because of not knowing the people. They're not our neighbors. The people I am here representing today that live close to Jeff Davis or on Jeff Davis, please stand, so you, they will know that we are in opposition of this. You got several emails from people that live on our street. My street is all brand-new people that have moved on, on that street. And they've come here to enjoy a quiet neighborhood. You did receive one from a lady that is living in my old home on Jefferson Davis, where my parents and where I grew up. And she explained that they came from Florida, and they had short-term rentals, and it turned their neighborhood into a nightmare. And so, they are really enjoying the neighborhood we have, we have offered to them. We had this happen on our street. And I love Mr. Foster, I'm not complaining, but he's not there twenty-four hours. This is not a hotel. You don't know what goes on. And it is not our job to call you or call the police and say, guess what? Something's going on at the house I'm not happy with. Our neighborhood is becoming a hotspot, and I'm really getting kind of tired of coming up here and begging for you to take care of our neighborhood. We did have this happen already on our street. We had, it slept nineteen people. It was advertised. They had nine SUVs. Someone called, which was Pat Gill, who lived next door, and Mr. Lawrence shut it down. We now have a neighbor, and her name is Connie, and she's here, and she's moved into that house. They're painting it, and it's become a neighborhood. This is what we are. You're leaders, you're the protector of our community, and I'm hoping and expect you to protect our neighborhood. Please give this request, short-term rental, some serious thought. I'm happy people want to buy our property. I'm happy you're going to make money. Okay. But I want you to understand, I'm really against this. And I thank you so very much for giving me the opportunity to speak to you today. Come on, Jeff.
No, 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 I recognize, let me recognize her. Come on.
Hey, y'all. Naomi Foster, nine four six one Woodlands Drive. I was, I was listening to what Martha was saying and all. And I get it, you know, they were a little nervous. But y'all, do we look like a set of zombies? We are not coming in, taking over a neighborhood, tearing it up. Guess what's going to happen to those two homes when I die and Barney dies? Retirement homes for our two sons, who by the way, have left, that's brain drain going on, not being business-friendly. We would never go into a neighborhood and say, right in the middle of the neighborhood, I'm going to do VRBO. No, sir. We picked Highway ninety, Commerce Corridor, people up and down tourists. We don't want people in the neighborhoods. That's why we didn't buy in the neighborhood. We brought on, we bought on Highway ninety. We've been on Briarfield for years, Paul knows that, no complaints. We've been on St. George, less than three blocks away, not one complaint. Not one person opposed it. No complaints. We don't want to get in the neighborhood. The VRBO that she was talking about, illegal. We've done all the steps to make it legal. We are trying to do business. I'm a fourth-generation Biloxian. Now, I could go to Gulfport and do it, or Ocean Springs. I choose to do my business right here in town, in Biloxi. I taught twenty-seven years at the Biloxi School System. I'm now going on ten years at Nativity First Grade. I love Biloxi, it's my home. It breaks my heart to see my boys' brain drain leave because of how they feel about how small businesses are treated. I get it's a neighborhood, however, Highway ninety right there, Commercial Corridor. And I guarantee, if a hotel came in, woo, I bet it would be approved. I mean, I want y'all to really think long and hard about this. We are not zombies destroying the neighborhood. If anybody drove by St. George, that house is some kind of nice. When I drive by, I think, dang, if it didn't have those steps, I'd like to live in that. They're beautiful homes. We're not going to buy a beautiful home and destroy the neighborhood and destroy everything. We're not gonna buy a beautiful home and destroy the neighborhood and destroy everything. And I beg pardon, he is available twenty-four seven. We don't vacation in the summertime, I work during the winter, so we're home. He is always available. People call, he greets the people at the house, he talks to them, he calls them on the telephone, they text back and forth. He's more available than a hotel, because I guarantee you don't have the manager or somebody walking them to the door and helping them. And then they call and say, hey, where can we go eat? Hey, what, you know, what about church? Well, we answer all those questions. We push Biloxi. Wonder how many tourists he meets today in his beach rental business? Phenomenal, you'd be shocked at how many. We're promoting Biloxi, we're not taking away from people, we are offering an alternative. We get a lot of multi-generational families that as a dog lover, they bring their pets. They want a vacation with their grandma or their grandpa pets. So, I wish you would really, really deeply consider this and know that we did show up today, and it was not shown up at the other meeting, at the planning commission.
Thank you for your comments. Uh, anyone else on this side of the room? Okay, we're gonna go to my right, your left. Anyone would like to speak?
Mind the way? Good afternoon, uh, thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm Jeff Taylor, one sixty Jefferson Davis Avenue. And for clarification, uh, that property was zoned residential, uh, medium density, it is not part of the commercial corridor of Biloxi. Those are zoned elsewhere along Highway ninety. Uh, the conditional use is asking to go from residential to a commercial operation. That is not good, uh, in my estimation, and if I'd have seen the sign, and we had storms back then, that sign was up two days and then it was gone. So, saying that, uh, we didn't care or we didn't think about it, we didn't really know about it, so, that's our problem. But, uh, the fact is, is that, uh, I live across the street from the house that was bought, uh, a year or so ago, that did vacation rental without the city knowing about it, and that's who we contacted, the city, and they stopped it. The day we, uh, noticed it, or the evening we noticed it, about two dozen people were in the middle of the street, having a good time, walking down to the street, and I don't care how well you manage, you can't manage people, uh, that are on vacation and suddenly placed in the neighborhood. You've got two directions to go there, up the street or down the street. So, uh, we've seen too much of that, and I would prefer rental, uh, rather, uh, on a regular basis. That would be safer, because they don't go to that neighborhood to party, they go to that neighborhood to live. Uh, also, taking and allowing homes to be used for a short-term vacation rental takes away from the established hotel industry, the casinos and everybody else. So, we're cutting into the business, and there are many other areas closer to the commercial strip that would be more appropriate from converting from residential to commercial. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Anyone else on my right, your left? Anyone in the back of the room would like to speak? All right, uh, public comments is now closed. We'll move on to the policy agenda. Do I have a motion?
Come on.
All right, motion by, who motioned it?
Need to let her read the, the item first.
Okay, go ahead, I'm sorry. I gotta head myself, let's read the item and then we'll ask for a motion.
Resolution granting conditional use approval to authorize a short-term rental located at one oh seven Jefferson Davis Avenue.
All right, the chair will recognize Ms. Newman, uh, that made the motion, and Mr. Lawrence who seconded it. And, Ms. Newman, would you like to go first, any? Okay.
Well, I'd like to, I'd like to move this C to deny. And the reason is, this is not a Highway ninety address, it's one oh seven Jefferson Davis, which is inconsistent with the neighborhood. And the people have the right to come to the council meeting and speak. They don't have to go to the planning commission. That's why we have these meetings, that's why we have public comment. So, we always expect people to come and voice their opinion. If they didn't go to the planning commission, doesn't really matter to us. We're the board that decides what's gonna happen with these arguments and resolutions. The planning commission is just a sounding board, they send it to us with recommendations, we don't approve all of them, we don't disagree with all of them. This one here, would affect this many people in the neighborhood, I can do anything but support the law.
Mr. Lawrence? We're, we're on, I believe we're on item A, not C.
No, point of order, man. He's talking about A. Item A, Ms. Newman moved the item, the, the resolution granting the conditional use, so, you seconded it, you can't then change it to C. It's, you can't then change the movement from granting the conditional use to deny.
She just moved it, she didn't move it.
Right, you seconded it, so it's, it's on her movement and not your second.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, I moved it to C, she just moved it, she didn't say anything about A.
Right, but you don't have that authority as a second.
Sure. As the right to deny.
Point of order, Mr. Attorney.
Yeah, was the first reading last week or the last meeting? Was it moved?
No, this, this is a resolution, so we don't need a first reading. This is just a resolution to grant, so the option isn't the same.
She moved to grant and Mr. Lawrence seconded it?
Correct.
I think then what's on the table is whether or not to grant the motion.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Subject to vote, and then if it does not pass, then there could be another motion. All right, so that's what's on the table right now.
You go ahead with your comments.
Well, then I'd, uh, I'll still make the same thing, if, if that's the case, then I'll remove my second. And I don't wanna approve this, this is not the right thing to do for the neighborhood. I never heard, I haven't moved anything anyway, so, this is, you need to stand up for the neighbors and protect their neighborhood, and that's what we need to do in this meeting. So, now I'll remove my second.
Okay. All right, do I have another second?
I'll second it for voting purposes.
Second about Mr. Guines. Mr. Guines, you have anything to add before we move on to other comments?
Yeah, um, just a couple of things, um, um, we've denied a couple that was in that neighborhood before, and, um, and, and of course, what we wanna do is we wanna make sure we protect the neighborhood. However, on the, uh, flip side of it, we, uh, established a precedence of, of, um, voting for ones that were on Beach Boulevard, and as he mentioned, it was two of them. My question to Mr. Foster, if I may ask, and maybe, um, Mr. Shambra would, uh, may wanna comment on it. Why didn't we have a Beach Boulevard address? Because we already have that precedent set.
We applied for, before we did the.
Yvonne, come into the microphone.
We did apply for the, the same thing happened with the Saint George address, and it was fifteen oh two Beach Boulevard, they changed it. Same thing happened with the Jeff Davis, we put it in before we even put in, before to, to go to the planning commission. Why it never got changed, I don't know. And when I got the thing for the planning commission, they still had one oh seven Jeff Davis. But it's identical to the house, D.R. Horton built both those homes. And for some reason, they changed the beach addresses, I don't know why, but they said you can just go to the planning commission or to the code enforcement, get it switched back to the beach address, which we did on Saint George. And then, I, when we purchased the Jeff Davis home, I did it with that one also. And for some reason, it, it didn't go through. It was supposed to be on the planning commission that it was a beach address, and it wasn't. And I don't know why they didn't put it through over there. But it, but it was put in before, I don't know what, what happened.
Right, and, and I drove it yesterday, because, you know, I felt like this would be an issue, I drove it so I can make sure I, I knew what I was talking about. And I looked at it and I saw it, you know, facing Highway ninety. And I know we already set a precedence for housing or, or property facing Highway ninety, but we approved. And of course, we wanna, because if we start gutting the neighborhood, that would be something different. But I've seen it was facing Highway ninety. And what would, what would've made it easier if it was, if it had a Beach Boulevard address? So, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna ask Mr. Creel to, to comment on it, uh, a little bit further, to give us a little more insight.
The addresses are actually assigned in our department, and there was some confusion at one time about, uh, whether or not to assign the address to the lot, the street that the house actually fronted, which in this case should've clearly been Beach Boulevard. But, what happened is, is that, uh, the confusion was that the person who was assigning those addresses, or some reason started addressing them to the side where the driveway comes in, which really doesn't make any sense. We tried to correct that, Mr. Foster is, is right. Uh, I think having the address on, uh, Jefferson Davis is confusion, because the police are fired, somebody goes out there, they're gonna be looking on Beach Boulevard for this house, it's clearly on Beach Boulevard and faces Beach Boulevard. Same thing with the Saint George address, I think that was confusion. But, uh, we'll, we'll make sure that these addresses get corrected.
Because what we don't wanna do is, and, and just like, um, Ms. Hunt said, if we start on Jeff Davis, then they're gonna walk all the way up the street. But if it was Beach Boulevard, then we know that the precedence is out front, and that's what the, for me, that is the biggest worry that, that I have. I don't want it coming back inside the, uh, uh, going north. It has to stay on the beach front, which is, you know, pretty much our, uh, tourist areas, is what we wanna promote.
And the good, the good thing about this is that it's conditional use, if for whatever reason Mr. Foster fails to comply with any issues here, and, and I can tell you from our department's standpoint, we've never had a complaint filed about any of his properties. But, if he fails to comply, planning commission and the city council have the right to have a hearing to revoke that conditional use permit. The other side of the argument too, is that because this property is owned RM thirty, any other request, applications for short-term rental on Jefferson Davis would have to go to the planning commission and have to come to the city council. So, you would have that control over making sure that it doesn't encroach into the neighborhood if that's what your concern is.
Okay, and my last question is, how hard would it be to reassign an address?
Uh, all it'll take is me going back to my office and have her reassign the address. I can correct that today.
Okay, thank you.
No, because we also advertise it by the parcel number, and so, um, nothing has changed. As long as the parcel number is correct and it's in the ad, then we're good.
I don't have much to add, but I thought, one thing that Ms. Foster said was telling, that, that if this was a hotel in the same location, would we approve it? And I'm inclined to think that we would, based off our history of, of actions on the council. Um, I think, Mr. Guines makes some, some, uh, telling remarks as well, that are, that are important and insightful, and I, I appreciate the insight. I failed to drive it and, and look at it and recognize the same, um, things you did, but, uh, I don't have anything further to add.
Thank you, Mr. Tisdale.
Yes, uh, just a couple of observations, basically what I heard is the house fronts Highway ninety. The driveway entrance is from Jeff Davis, apparently.
That's correct.
Okay. As I recall, I think there was an apartment complex there, pre-Catrina. I can't remember, I know Sadler's was on the east side, I'm thinking it might've been Sadler's on the west side too, or, but it was another apartment complex with a few units there. I, I have no problem with this as long as it fronts Highway ninety, and I would vote in favor of this as it's presented today, of course with the understanding that the address will be changed to Beach Boulevard. My con, my concern is, um, with short-term rentals, is that we need to be as consistent in our reasoning as possible, and that, of course, everybody has a different perspective. But in this case, Highway ninety is a commercial corridor, you look at all the, I'm, I'm thinking there's a, there used to be apartments in between the short-term rental at Saint George, I think it is, and Jeff Davis, I don't know what's at about two acres there.
Saint Charles, that was the Saint Charles.
Saint Charles, I, I don't know what's gonna go there, I just know that the, the cost of beachfront property coupled with insurance costs that are skyrocketing, and then the resulting construction costs and elevation. It's just, it, it's literally impossible for the average person to afford such property, much less build a structure on that. So, that being said, uh, I, I would add one other thing, and I think I would be remiss if I didn't mention this. My experience with Mr. Foster is that he does a good job with his properties. The other thing is, and, and sometimes this is mentioned and sometimes it's not, with the conditional use, Jerry, you usually mention that if, if the, uh, rules and regulations of the city or land development ordinance are not followed, then the conditional use can be revoked.
Correct.
So, if there are wild parties keeping folks up, loud music, suspected drug, trans, or whatever, the thing to do is complain to the police department so that you leave a paper trail, and at some point, if those incidents stack up, then you have some justification for asking that the conditional use be revoked. Uh, and I, I, I think the confusion is based on the address, but you said that could be changed this afternoon?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. That concludes my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Tisdale. Uh, the chair, uh, before we conclude the discussion, would entertain, uh, either a motion to table it, or we can go ahead and vote this measure either up or down.
A couple questions, if we table it, and you're gonna, you're gonna remove the one oh seven Jeff Davidson, and it strictly be Highway ninety?
That's correct.
Right?
Yes, sir.
How long would that take you to do that? Since we didn't have before.
As soon, as soon as I get back to the office, we'll make that progress.
How long has it been before then? Why was it bought, we had to bring all these people, be in a fight for the neighborhood, and now you said you're gonna change it? You know, you gotta take care of some of the people, they can't come to every meeting we have, can't go to every planning commission, the people's making money off, they can make those things, that's what they do. These neighbors trying to protect their neighborhood. And now here we are, we're gonna change the address to make it Highway ninety, so it'll be all right. You should've already done that. They shouldn't even have to be here. Nobody had been here complaining if it would've been Highway ninety. Come on, Jerry.
This is the first complaint we've had about the address being on Jeff Davis's today. This is the first complaint I've heard about it.
Well, I mean, you know, when you come with a neighborhood address, you're gonna have neighbors fighting for their neighborhood, you know?
And let me correct one other thing, we did have a complaint on Saint George and Highway ninety, we had horses on there. And they did complain about that, so everything not perfect. And it was kinda weird, they have horses, I don't know where they come from, but they had horses, I mean Barney, I don't know where they come from, but they did have a complaint.
All right, Mr. Demming?
In lieu of tabling it, so we don't have to deal with this again in a couple of weeks, I just wanna charge the mayor with, um, providing us with an update as, as, uh, the address has been changed by Mr. Creel's department. If we, we, if we approve this, we would require an update verifying that the address is changed by our next meeting.
I think you could pass it, condition on the address being changed within a reasonable time.
Well, I'll add that amendment that, that, uh...
And I'll second it.
Thank you, um, Councilman Tisdale and Councilwoman Newman, I don't know whose second you'll acknowledge, but I'll amend it to grant this.
Here's the motion.
I'm sorry?
For, for the clerk's benefit, if you would.
Read the amendment. I'm gonna move to amend.
No, there is no motion, there was nobody made a motion.
There was no second.
No one made a motion.
No, they, they didn't, um, do it.
It was just a discussion.
I second it, remember, uh, I second, he removed it second, I second it for...
Oh, the chair said he would write, he said he would. Yeah, yeah.
Oh, okay.
All right, so what we have, we already have, have duly motioned and seconded the resolution, we now have an amendment by Mr. Demming, saying that we would like to get the address changed correctly, and it was seconded by Mr. Guines. That's how I understand this amendment. So, any other discussion on the amendment? All in favor of the amendment?
One, one thing, on amendment, all you have to do is change the address and bring it up next week. Why you amend all this stuff? Why amend all this stuff? Make sure it's changed. Bring it back to the table the right way and do it next week. They're not gonna die in a week. And these people wanna see it done the right way. That's all I'm saying.
Mr. Lawrence, I, I don't disagree with you. I offered, uh, the chair to listen to a motion to table, but the motion to amend preceded any motion to table. So right now, we're, uh, discussing and considering the amendment. That's, that's all. No more, no less. So any more discussion on the amendment?
Call for a question.
All in favor of the amendment? Those opposed? Passes five to one. Now we'll vote on the resolution as amended. Any other discussion before I proceed?
I may wanna read, read that to be sure we're all on the same page. Can you read that amended?
The amendment? Do you have the amendment?
The amended motion that we're fixing to vote on.
The amendments are already been passed, though. We already voted and passed it. All right. Now we're voting on the resolution as amended. Any discussion, Mr. Lawrence?
Have to make all these people come back again to make sure it's done right?
Nope.
Yeah, right.
Notes.
Somebody needs to start standing up in the neighborhood. Once in a while, somebody needs to protect the people in the neighborhood. And the way we do any of these things is not the right way to do it.
Okay, duly noted. All in favor? Those opposed? Motion passes five to one. Move on to the next item.
Resolution granting conditional use approval to authorize a short-term rental at 244 Ranor Street.
Chair entertain a motion?
I moved to table this for, um, a week.
Second. Move to table. Do we have to put it on the table to table it? We gotta, we gotta move it for discussion, then we can table it. Mr. Gines, seconded by Mr. Lawrence. Discussion?
Yeah, I just, I went and looked at it, and, um, I have a few questions I need to, I'll talk with Ms. Krill about, and I want Ranor Street, yes.
Actually, actually, the Ranor Street applicant sent a letter in today asking that this be tabled to the next meeting because they're not here and, and one of their members is in New York, and they asked that it be tabled for a week.
Okay, so that was a telepathy thing?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I had some questions. All righty, great.
All right, so we, if there's no other discussion, we'll, uh, consider Mr. Gines's motion to table?
Okay, yes. Call for a question.
All in favor? We got a second by Mr. Lawrence. All opposed? Motion to table carries unanimously. Next item.
Resolution granting a relocation of a fifteen-foot-wide utility easement for two parcels at tw- twelve fifty-two and twelve fifty-four Beach Boulevard to allow construction of Aqua Suites and Residence Inn.
Do I have a motion? Mr. Lawrence, second? Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Tisdale and Mr. Lawrence.
I'd like to have this table. And the reason I like to table it, this has yet to go before this plan has yet to go before the planning commission. It goes this week, Saint Patrick Day, Thursday. So I'd like to, s- subject your call after the planning commission meeting. See what they say on this.
I'll, I'll second it.
All right, if there is no other discussion, we'll consider the, uh, motion to table it by Mr. Lawrence, seconded by Mr. Gines. All in favor? Those opposed? Motion carries, six oh. Next item?
Resolution granting minor subdivision, a final plot approval for property located at 13185 Jim Bur Road.
Moved by Mr. Lawrence.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Gines.
Jerry, this is just, uh, taking a piece of land and making two plots.
That, that, that's correct. Uh, this is a family member giving a part of their ten-acre piece of property to one of their child so that they can build a house on it. It's just minor subdivision.
All right, any others discussion? All in favor? Those opposed? Motion carries, six oh. Next item?
Resolution appointing Ashley Pickage-Lamas to the Biloxi Municipal School Board.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mr. Tisdale, seconded by Mr. Lawrence. Mr. Tisdale?
Yeah, I know the families. I don't know her personally. But I spoke with, uh, Mr. Leonard about her qualifications, and I'm satisfied she'll do a good job representing not only her child. It's nice to see someone on the school board with children in the schools. It's not always the case. I'm sure she'll do a fine job for not only her child, but other children in the city of Biloxi and the school district. Thank you.
Mr. Lawrence?
Anybody with duty jobs, God bless them. Appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, anyone else? Any discussion? Mr. Gines? Ms. Newman? Demming? Uh, all I have to say, uh, with, with a middle name like Pickage must be good, so congratulations. All, all in favor? Those opposed? Passes unanimously. Do I have a motion on the consent agenda?
I'll second.
All right, Mr. Lawrence, seconded by Mr. Gines.
Speech, 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 speech.
Thank you very much. If you'd like to make a comment or two, we, we're all ears. I will, we'll be watching your career, uh, very closely.
Let me add, Mr. President, she takes, she takes our oath tonight at five thirty, so you be getting ready for the, for the, uh, let me add also, we wanna thank Jimmy Wallace, whose place he will be taking. So he, his dedication is very much appreciated. So I know Ashley will follow Jimmy, uh, with, uh, that, you know, Biloxi force in mind. So thank you, Ashley. Appreciate your help.
Thank you, Mayor. All right, on the consent agenda, we do have a duly motion and seconded, uh, Mr. Lawrence.
Yeah, uh, Chief, uh, B, is Kaylee Thomas, but, uh, haunted. What are we doing here?
She, she's an employee of the police department, and, uh, the only way to get her certified as a, as a deputy clerk is through the court so that she can swear affidavits at the front desk.
She already works there.
She works there, yes, sir.
So no more extra money. And that causes...
No, no extra money.
Thank you. Uh, Jade, we amended the resolution on the Hurricane Katrina. What, what are we doing here?
Councilman, last, uh, councilman we had, that resolution, uh, was to purchase software for our new project, which is the BEA one-two-and-three project between the Bs and Veterans. There's a Scrivener's error that was copied from a previous, uh, project, St. Michael's. It's just correcting a Scrivener's error.
All right.
Thank you.
What we have right here on, uh, N? No velvet like that, Mike like that. No velvet? What are we doing with this, with the crossover, MGM?
Councilman, that's the, uh, that's the, uh, MGM Park cross, crosswalk where there are two elevators. And we have to have a fire, in addition to having telephone service in those elevators, we also have to have fire alarm in the elevators. So that's just, uh, updating the contract from up to rebel sound for the, uh, the, uh, sound system, the, uh, odd sound system.
This has more to do with the elevators?
Elevators are expensive. And that's, uh, you know, and in addition to having the telephones, we also have to have the fire system and all the other maintenance that goes with an elevator.
Okay, just checking that. And Lighthouse Park, uh, the next one on, uh, P, is that finishing up everything we had to do with Lighthouse Park?
So this is the, uh, resolution closing it out, meaning we're done, money spent, we're done, it's over.
So everything we did, we accomplished what we wanted with the park. We just finished, this is the final payment.
We did. We, as you know, in, in the past, once work is done, we like to close these out so that the money can, can be moved or it can be used elsewhere.
Romeo or R, or Maro, whatever you wanna call it? That's, uh, about the sidewalks and parking improvements. What, what is, this is all the...
This is the, you know, actually planning, uh, bid performance design from, uh, the expansion. Looking at the, uh, sidewalks from the B road all the way to, to the bridge, where we can add additional parking and concrete, uh, between existing seawall or, or sidewalks all the way to enhance, you know, the, uh, help us with the maintenance, keep the sand, you know, in a better place.
This is all funded through what?
I'm sorry?
This is all funded through a general fund or...
In a number of places. MDOT may be one of the places where, where we call on it, but it could be multiple sources.
I'd like to see MDOT come up with some money. That'd be nice.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
They have plenty of money.
We just need to be able to land some of it. But no, it's, it's a, it's a...
And on the, this lab, what is for P D S? Sierra?
Yes.
Okay, what are we doing? This is Main Street money again.
This is a gentleman that's building, uh, he's out of the general southern contractors, building right there, an engineer or contractor. He's building a new home on Comfort Place. And, uh, uh, the grant for his house, I think it's fifteen hundred square feet, is, uh, seven thousand dollars a resident. No, 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 no short-term rental.
No short-term rental yet, huh? We'll change that. We'll make up a reason to have short-term rentals.
At this point, no short-term rental.
Y'all like doing that. Like it. That's it.
Mr. Gines?
I guess if we're, um, buying some fuel before we have to take out a bond on it, right? I have none.
Ms. Newman? Mr. Demming? Mr. Tisdale?
It's on item T. We're, we're substituting, and I think it had something to do with the alternates and two projects involved, actually. Just one, I'm not, A, I'm not sure that I understand it.
I think, I think you do understand it, Councilman. There are two funding sources, so we're trying to balance the, uh, repairs that we're asking the contractor to do, uh, upfront, with which funding source he's gonna be billing it to, whether to Zeta or Zeta repairs or to the capital project that predated Zeta.
So this, this clarifies...
Well, all we did was we clarified there was an issue with the doors and how many doors were in each side, so minor stuff.
All right, thank you. That concludes my comments.
Are there any exceptions? Any exceptions? Wait a minute, are there any exceptions? All right, there's been no exceptions. Go ahead, Mr. Lawrence.
I was gonna ask you, what are we doing with transferring the money in the legal department?
Which, can you... That's for, uh, additional expert witness fees for the, uh, litigation, Toddland's litigation and Oscar Renda litigation. Expert witness, not attorney's fees, expert witness fees.
Okay, all in favor of the, uh, consent agenda? Those opposed? I think it passed unanimously. We'll move on to, uh, let's see. Code enforcement hearings.
The first case on the agenda today, item A, is Brenda K. Hart, 2265 Sabrina Drive, and this property's still in violation.
Anyone here to speak on behalf of Brenda K. Hart? Come up to the... Okay. Just state your, uh, name and address and go ahead and make your case.
Brenda K. Hart, 2265 Sabrina Drive. Um, we have, there was a back sunroom put on, um, and that, we've had problems with the roof. The main roof of the house is still good. Uh, we've had, I've had a roofer come out. I wasn't aware of everything that I needed to be aware of. But, um, I've got a licensed and bonded roofer that will come in May. Yep, and, and who's friends of the family who will help us fix the back roof. And, uh, she was there taking pictures yesterday, but the entire yard's been completely cleaned now. There's, there's no more, except for, I didn't put car covers on the cars because somebody told me, which I did get them, but I, I was told you shouldn't put them on when they're wet. But I didn't put them on today. I just got them yesterday. Um, besides the three cars there, which the, all the cars do run, even the tires been taken off the car. Everything's, or, except for my little dog kennel there. My dog kennelled it right in front of the car, but everything else has been... I don't have pictures to show you, but we, we took care of everything.
You need more time to finish up what you're doing?
We do, uh, we're gonna, all that's, all that's gone. Like, none of that is there, except for my car. Um, I, we need, I need more time, uh, for the roofers to get there in, uh, May.
I'll give you thirty days.
Everything else has been...
Thirty days, but I'll help you. We extended thirty days.
Mr. Lawrence, may I ask you, uh, to give her sixty days? It's hard to get roofers out right now. Um, it, it's tough to get roofers out right now. Can I ask you to, to give her sixty days?
Thank you. Just give us a report in sixty days. You, you moving for that? And I'll second it.
I'll, I think, Mr. Lawrence.
We'll do sixty days.
Do I come back? Just come back in sixty days?
Well, well, Ms. Krill will look at the progress, and as long as you made progress, like you said, you cleaned that up.
Yes, it's good.
And, uh, that, that shows progress, and he'll give us a report on progress. And then if you need additional thirty days and you actually have your roofers there to knock it out, he'll close it out after that.
We have a, we have a motion for sixty days, uh, by Mr. Lawrence, seconded by Mr. Gines. All in favor? Opposed? You have sixty days?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Next case.
Item B, C.J. Shell, The Brand, 316 Strangie. It's still in violation, but I would ask for thirty days on this because they are making progress.
I'mma, I'mma ask a little bit longer. I'mma ask for at least sixty on that. Um, we did a resolution, um, uh, a week ago. She passed away, so I'mma ask for a way more time.
There's a motion, uh, sixty days by Mr. Gines, seconded by Mr. Lawrence. All in favor? Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. That concludes code enforcement hearings. Routine agenda. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Mr. Lawrence, seconded by Mr. Tisdale. Mr. Lawrence?
All right, well, how much money? Last week we did two-point-four-eight million. What we do this week? Come on, come on. Saint Patrick, we was lucky last time. Now get good here.
The next, uh, amount of money we'll be receiving from Mima will be, uh, a little over one-point-eight million. They're still reviewing it, but I expect it should start working its way through the process first next week.
So one-point-eight million?
Yes, sir.
The next thing in line?
Yes, sir.
All right. Appreciate that.
All right.
Yeah.
Mr. Tisdale, you got anything?
Uh, no comments. Thank you.
Anyone else have any comments on the routine agenda? All in favor? Those opposed? Passes unanimously. Motion to...
Recede.
Recede.
The move.
Moved by Mr. Demming, seconded by Mr. Gines. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. We'll take a brief five-minute recess and we'll go into our, um, our special meeting, uh, workshop.